Welcome to Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Call to order, go call.
Okay, Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Report from the Town of Hennessy AD/HOC Agencies. Barb. Hennessy United Deal, I think, went over pretty well. I think they had a little over 400 people show up, so I think everything was good there. Hadn't heard any complaints.
Another copy. Tiffany found a grant, a T-Mobile grant, that I spent a few weeks on applying for to pay for all the concrete and all the sod around the pavilion. So we should know when December, whether we cut it for him or not.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Approval of the previous month meeting. Board Trustees, September 29th, 24 minutes. Approval of the plans as follows. Purchase orders, $46,936.33. RSTF, $23,270.09. Cemetery care, $1,100. Library fund, $44.37. Street and alley fund, $3,000, $899.59. Previous month purchase orders, $2,407.63. October POs, September EMOs, POs. Accepted department reports, fire department, police department, department cemetery report. Office manager, bank accounting information. Approved renewal of liability and property insurance with Oklahoma Amortable Assurance Group. OMAG liability policy, OMAG property policy. Approved VOIP 12-month renewals for the fire department, police department, library, and town hall. The Hennessy Fire Department 12-month, Hennessy Library 12-month, Hennessy Police Department 12-month, and Hennessy Town Hall 12-month.
I'd like to ask to bring the minutes of the previous meeting down out of consent agenda.
You have no cords?
No, no. We're gonna use them.
I don't think so.
No motion to remove one from the consent document.
We do need a motion. No, no. Okay, I didn't think so, but...
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. With the exception of the minutes. With the exception of the minutes.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Epstein.
Says and comments. Town administrator report.
You have my report. I will like to announce to the public that Alyssa Kubat has been permitted to direct her public works. Her and I have discussed, and I think that I'm excited to see how she develops into this role.
Congratulations.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
What?
Point of order, sir.
Yeah.
Tiffany, are you done with your report, or... I've got a question on it, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay, on the Reed Waterline project, you put in here that we're laying sod. Is that done?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I didn't know how much is supposed to go down, and I did see some sod over there, but it looked to me like they kinda like stopped in the middle of the project, but if Alyssa, you're... If you're good with it, at least a statement of work, I'm happy. Thank you. That's it, sir.
Hello. As a scheduled business, bring up the minutes for the September meeting, Bert.
Okay, on page six of 158, Kelly, I think there's a duplicate entry there. 6.1 and 6.2 appears to be identical.
Well, you are correct.
I don't, I don't know what the remedy is. Jared, can that just be deleted?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September meeting as amended.
Second.
Okay. Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Accepted 20, 22, 23 FY audit final report.
Point of order, sir.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got some questions for Arledge.
Yep.
Can I introduce him?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is Jake with Arledge and Associates, and he was the partner who was over our audit... Right, you were over our audit for this past time. They take turns on the different partners being over your audit every, I think they switch about every three years.
Three years.
Yeah, and so he had numerous...
Yeah, generally, you have two partners touching the audit each year, so...
Great.
I would do the quality control review, I think, this year. We'll have to go back and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. I got the floor shift.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for being here. You bet. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions for you. I have, I had some questions for you last month, not for you, but on the report, and so I've looked at it another month now, and I've answered a lot of my own questions. Okay. Just by looking up stuff and checking state law and all that stuff, so I've got it down to a bare minimum, and like I said when I met you a few minutes ago, no numbers, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hit you with some common sense questions. I say common sense, they are for me anyway. They may not be for anybody else. Okay, I'm on...
Is my okay set here, or do you guys need someone else?
No, you're good.
I'm fine, I'm fine. So, let me, let me start by saying I don't have any accounting background, and I don't speak your language. And that makes it even more difficult for me. So Tiffany has given me some training on, on, on the audit process, and what Crawford does, and what you guys do. Actually, she gave it to all of us in, in this very meeting over the period of the last couple of years, so I've gotten doses of it, you know, incrementally, and it's kinda hard medicine to take sometimes. So, I, I don't want you to think that I disagree with anything in the report. I do disagree with one thing, but that's with, that's with, and I professionally disagreed with Tiffany on what she put in the report last month, so that's not confrontational at all, I don't think. So, starting off here, I'm looking at, some of the pages are numbered and some of them aren't, so it's very difficult for me to tell you where I'm at. I'm on, I'm on the independent auditors' report to the Honorable Mayor and City Council, Town of Hennessy. Okay, then at the bottom, auditors' responsibilities for the audit of the financial statements. In this paragraph, the way I understand that information is, you guys, one of the main things that you guys were trying to do here is verify that our financial statements were correct, accurate.
Reasonably stated.
Reasonably, yes.
Reasonably stated in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting.
Yes, sir. Okay, and then on the next page, I'm looking at the bullet. I see obtain an understanding of internal control relevant to the audit. Okay, so, and I'll get to that again later. As a matter of fact, I'll say right here that I think, in my opinion, this ended up being our finding. The information in this paragraph right here, I may be wrong, but I'll ask you about that later on. And then the, the next bullet, evaluate the overall presentation of the financial statements. And you didn't, you guys didn't have any comments really about that, other than that they, they looked acceptable. Conclude whether doubt about the talent's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time, and you guys covered that. So in my opinion, this is what I was gonna see in the report. Does that make sense to you?
On the, in the financial statements themselves?
Well, yeah.
No, no. So these are our responsibilities in relation to the work that we're performing on our side.
Okay.
So the financial statements are management's responsibility, so we don't prepare the financial statements. Crawford actually says with those.
Yeah, we, we contract with Crawford to do that. Am I right, Tiffany?
Okay.
On the same page.
When we go into the financial statements themselves, you're not gonna see any commentary in relation to these bullets. This is just our responsibility as the auditor, so if you were to actually see our work papers, you would see these responsibilities carried out.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I understand that, and I do not need to see your, your work papers.
Okay, good.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I appreciate that. Now, down at the bottom of that same page, under supplementary information, our audit was conducted for the purpose of forming opinions on the financial statements, and I think you guys did that very well, as a matter of fact. So, and then on the next page, other reporting required by government audit and standards. I picked out of this paragraph, "and not to provide an opinion on the internal control over financial reporting or on compliance." Okay, so now my brain goes from there. My brain goes from that statement back to the finding and later on in the report. So the question popped into my mind, so if you guys weren't evaluating our internal controls, how did we end up with a fairly major finding on internal controls?
Yes, so we do evaluate your internal controls as part of the audit process.
Okay.
But I don't provide, you'll not see an opinion of me, anywhere of me saying, "Your internal controls are suitably designed and effective at detecting material fraud," or anything like that.
Okay.
This is a standard bullet paragraph, you will see this in every audit report, in every city, every town in the state.
I get that.
But when you go back to the, and I can talk about the finding if you want, but, or if you wanna put a pin in that, I, we can go back to it.
If you don't mind, sir.
Sure, absolutely. So my, my assessment of the finding here is the town was short-staffed last year, and so generally, there's some imaging that is done for requisitions, purchase orders, invoices, and everything that would accompany a check. And we selected a capital outlay for testing.
Okay.
Requesting the supporting documentation that would accompany the actual check issuance.
Yes, sir.
Now, that was not able to be found, so it was about a $99,000 check that was written. There was no purchase order requisition or invoice, so there was, and I think truth be told, we were, one of the reasons that it took us from fieldwork from May 13th to issuing August 8th, because generally, we get through fieldwork in about 45 to 60 days, but this one took a little longer because we were giving the team a little bit...
Sure.
...of time to try and obtain the invoice and everything.
And I did find it this past month.
Well, there you go. So it took, it took a while, and I think it kinda got to a point where, yes, I mean, the nice thing is, you all would've looked at it, you would've approved it as the council because it would've gone on your normal approval process that you look at every month. It's just for the audit, the document wasn't retained, so you won't see that it wasn't adequately, you're not gonna see like, oh, we think this was any sort of issue related to management. It was more of like, records were not being retained adequately.
Right, I get that.
Okay.
And I've got a couple more questions on that here in a minute, but I wanted to go through mine, my questions because I've kinda got a rapid stack. So I'm very happy with what you just said on this stuff, okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn some pages. Now I've got page numbers. Nine, 10, 11, 12, 14. That's my fault, I did not print those pages. Okay, so now I'm on, I'm on the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. I'm not gonna read that whole title. Are you with me? Again, this, this is actually another letter, it looks like to me, to the Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Yep.
So I'll, I don't have any questions on the first paragraph. Okay, so the second paragraph, report on internal control of financial reporting. So again, the internal controls that you were concerned with was over the, internal controls that cover financial reporting. Okay, all right. I've got that straight.
Okay.
Okay. Then, second from last paragraph on that page, you guys identified a certain deficiency in internal control. So, and I, you know, Tiffany explained it to me, and I, I totally agree that, that this, that this is a deficiency, and that you guys actually categorized it as a significant deficiency.
Yeah.
Based on probably the dollar amount, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So, all right. And again, I don't want, I don't want you to think that I'm disagreeing with your finding.
I actually, I enjoy actually people asking questions. Sometimes these go too quick.
Okay.
Not affecting me at all.
Okay, sir, we appreciate it. All right, so I've got, I've got just a few more, and they're all back-to-back, okay? I'm now on the summary schedule of audit findings and response, okay? And I wanna talk about the cause and effect paragraph. You guys wrote, "The finding is caused by inadequate purchasing procedures and insufficient staff to develop effective internal controls for accurate and complete records." I know that Ms. Tillman, our town administrator, put that in the management response. I told her at our last meeting that I professionally disagreed with that, that we were not understaffed, in my opinion, okay? And, you know, it's only normal or natural for us, I'm sure some of my colleagues on the board probably disagree with me also, like Ms. Tillman does. However, I would like to know what you guys saw that caused you to put that in your report, because you did, you guys did put that in there on that cause and effect paragraph. What, can you, what did you see that made you think we were short-staffed?
I think it was as simple as the process of actually providing the imaging and putting the information into the system, and this was not retained, or this information was not in the system.
Yes, sir.
And to the point that Tiffany just made, she did find it now.
Yeah.
Which they're now adequately staffed, so there was an ability to actually locate it, get it properly imaged, get the documentation retained.
Okay.
So if you're saying, you know, at a certain point, and I guess I would also kinda hang the hat on, we have not had issues out here in the past.
Okay.
So there's not been this type of finding before, so this was unexpected.
Yeah.
But...
Unusual, right, yeah.
But there was a train, you know, there was a staffing transition. There was people, they were shorts, you were short-staffed last year during the 22-23 year.
Yeah.
Which resulted in this getting missed, this one, in this one process. Now, again, I would expect that when we come back out here in a few weeks, that we're going to see, we're gonna go back to what I would expect to be as...
So you guys do have a follow-up plan?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Not on this audit.
Not on this audit.
Not on this audit.
For 2024.
For 2024, okay.
But actually, we will make an assessment on this finding, whether it was resolved or not.
Yeah, very good, very good, thank you. Let me pull you back just a second. You've used the words, you've used the word "imaging" two or three times in your conversation with me. Can you expand on that? Tell me what you're talking about.
So you're scanning in your supporting documentation related to checks, okay? So your fee's relatively low, I will tell you, for, for our work, you know, for what we typically do, but one of the reasons it is low is because we don't come on-site, because Tiffany actually has the ability to upload support.
Right.
Digitally.
Yeah.
Okay? So since that is, because that's part of the process here, let's upload this digitally, and then we have all the support, and then it can be reviewed by whoever needs to review it.
Right.
Well, this one was missed.
Got it.
And again, because of the, because of the staffing transition, there wasn't enough people, this one was missed. So when I talk about the imaging process, if it was just the fact that, okay, well, this just wasn't scanned, that wouldn't be that big a deal, because I would say, well, just give me the paper copy.
Sure.
But we weren't able to locate the paper copy until just now.
Understand, thank you very much on that. And Tiffany will tell you that I'm one of the, I'm a proponent of scanning and imaging and creating digital documents. I, I really like that we're doing that. Okay, so that was one cap, you guys, in your language, you call that a capital outlay.
Yes.
Okay, that was one capital outlay.
Correct.
One of the, one of the things that I'm interested in, being an old quality assurance guy myself, is population size. In other words, if you guys did five capital outlays and we found this one major problem, I would be excited about that versus if you did 500 capital outlays and found one write-up.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you? Do you have any idea what the population size was of the capital outlays you guys did?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
You ballpark?
I can't even ballpark it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you have a pretty low materiality.
Uh-huh.
So I would, I would expect that there's probably not a whole lot that we had to sample.
Okay.
Or I, I'm sorry, let me reverse that. I think there's probably a larger population than you think.
Okay.
Would have, you would have based upon the materiality size for the town. That being said, even if this was one of 500.
Yes, sir.
The dollar amount here is what elevated it.
Right.
Because the material, your materiality out here is just, it's pretty low.
Got it.
And so because the dollar amount of this was so substantial, our hands professionally, by our professional standards.
Right.
Our hands are kinda tied.
Right, understand that.
Okay.
Understand that. So again, I'm a rapid stack here, so my next question is sample size. So you, you know, you can't even ballpark the population size, so I guess that sample size question is out of the, out on the street too, so let's not worry about that. Okay, again, I, I know I'm repeating myself here, but I wanna, I need, I need, I really need to know, and just repeat yourself if you have to, if you've already answered me on this, what did you guys see that made you think we had insufficient staff?
Again, it is just related to the fact that this was missed.
Okay, all right. You said that earlier, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay. The reason I keep pounding on that is, is we put a lot of effort on keeping people in town hall. Okay, all right. Just a few more here, real quick. I wanna read them here, you may have answered a couple of these. Okay, on, on the, on that, on the, under the finding criteria, condition, cause and effect, you guys made a recommendation. Is that recommendation what you would expect as an internal control? Is it, is that what that is?
So, sorry, I'm trying to get into our software system to see if I can pull up what your sample size was, so give me...
Oh, that's okay, I, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, so our recommendation, this is, so we recommend the town implement a system to properly approve, record, and account for expenditures on a regular basis, along with reviewing and approving financial records. The system should consist of proper approval and retention of purchase requisitions, orders, invoices, and payment support. All that's really saying is you were missing documentation.
Right.
That your controls, and I would say, if you're looking at it from this standpoint, again, we haven't had this issue in the past, but turnover is a reality everywhere. So if we're gonna say, what's my recommendation? Well, in these circumstances, when you have turnover, you've gotta have compensating controls and additional controls that would basically kick in with, now we're short-staffed, now what do we do? Make sure that this position is covered, and how do we cover it?
Right, I, I understand that. In my readings, I've come to understand the two-man concept, and even the three-person concept on internal controls.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanna talk about, the next question I have is actually on schedule, and I can actually combine all three of these questions into one.
Okay.
I'm kinda confused as to why you guys did the audit, documented your report, had Ms. Tillman respond to it in a management response, and sent, you sent it into the state auditors.
Yes.
Long before we got to see it as a board. Is that normal, is that industry norm, or...
Yes.
Is it required by law?
It's not required. I mean, so the way that we kinda look at it is, the state auditor, or I should say, the state withholds your gas tax.
Right, yeah, they're about that too.
Yeah. They withhold the gas tax, and if you aren't filed by 12/31, they will withhold it until you file it.
Right.
So frequently, when we do audit procedures for a city or a town that is subsequent to that 12/31 date, when we get done, we'll go ahead and upload it.
Yeah.
Because the process of me saying, okay, look, if I need to go to the state auditor and say, look, we uploaded this, it went to council, there was some changes, I need to pull it back down.
Okay.
Then we can pull it back down and make that change. That's not that big a deal.
Yeah.
But it's more just, we wanna make sure that you guys are getting your gas taxes as quick as humanly possible.
Sure, yeah, and I personally appreciate that, I'm sure my colleagues do too. Okay, one more question, and does, does state law require the board? We've got it on the agenda for acceptance. Does state law require that the board, us, to accept your report by motion?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I actually have your capital outlay sample.
Population?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So on your governmental, we had three selections, and on your business-type activities, we had three as well, so you had six total selections. Sorry, this is not cooperating with me right now, give me one second.
Thank you.
That was just capital outlay.
That was just capital outlay?
Yes, that's not everything.
That is definitely not everything. There's a lot more sampling and testing that goes into it.
I'm sure, yes, sir.
Uh, but... I think my fingers just may be too fat for this.
Again, I wanted to say, I wanted to restate that I didn't, in no way, shape, or form, did I mean this conversation to be negative.
Nope.
Toward Arledge, or Callen, or Ms. Tillman.
So the error that we found, and I shouldn't say it's an error, the one that did not have support was a governmental activity, so one of the three that we tested, that capital outlay should not have the, all the support that was necessary.
I was hoping you'd tell me you did 500.
We don't have 500 capital outlays.
I would say with, even with the six, yeah, even with the six, I mean, I would...
No, I mean, I, I looked, like, and I finally found it a couple of weeks ago, and so, yes.
Yeah, and I mean, even with the six, I mean, I would say you're probably getting a pretty substantial coverage of what you actually have in capital outlay.
I understand, sir. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all the questions I have, sir.
Okay.
Randy?
I don't have anything.
Got a question or two and a comment. I've, I've heard this staffing issue come up several times. I think the problem, or maybe we're confusing terms. I feel like we were understaffed. We did have the people here, but we had a massive amount of turnover during that time. And I can think of several individuals working in here who had zero governmental accounting experience, probably zero accounting experience, period. And I would also like to point out the fact that Tiffany came back on a split vote on this board, but it was during her absence that this finding took place. Also, one question, just out of curiosity, what, what does it cost the town to have you here tonight? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, actually, hold on. You're lucky. I'm actually in the actual file to actually look at this. So give me one second.
Is it an hourly rate?
It is not an hourly rate.
Oh, okay.
We do, we do a fixed fee, basically because you're a Crawford client.
Okay.
So we don't do fixed fee with everybody, but generally, if you're working with Crawford, we kind of have a, an expected standard that they're going to hit, that does not require us to do an hourly rate because.
So you're saying that's a good thing that we're with Crawford?
It's a very good thing. So our fee for the audit, our fee for the audit was 17,000 this year. There is an up-charge if you have a single audit that is required, but that was not required in 23.
Okay. So your presence here tonight is included in that?
A hundred percent.
Okay. Good.
And the commute out here. I won't even hit you with my.
We appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you for being here.
No problem. Thank you.
We need to make a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept the 2022, 23 FY audit final report.
Second.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Sir, if you want to get out of here, you can.
Will thank you. Thank you for your questions. I do appreciate it very much.
Listen, his fee's included. He might as well study.
Yeah.
Y'all have a great day.
Discussion with possible action concerning the parking situation, problem on Main Street and Oklahoma Avenue.
Okay, I think this is the third time this has been on the agenda. And we've gotten nowhere. We had parallel parking from this alley east to Cherokee Street. Somehow that got changed. I don't know if it's the markings on the street itself were so worn off, or I remember at one time a sign being there, but it still is posing a problem. And it's not just coming down, people have said, well, make this alley behind here one-way going north, I mean, going south. I don't really feel like that that's going to solve the problem. If you come down Oklahoma Avenue, the problem is, and I've been watching this for the past month, is when it was parallel parking, you could see, you actually have to get in the oncoming lane to get by the cars that are angle parked on the east side of this alley. And now, in looking at that, it may be an angle issue. We may be parking at 45s and need to be 30s or whatever to help with that. I had spoke with Sheila Dwell at the Hive, and she would like to see a handicap spot in front of the Hive, which I agree with, but I think Tiffany said we weren't sure we had the correct ramps and things. Have you looked at that?
Alyssa actually met with the concrete people, and there is going to be some minor corrections that we will have to do, but it won't be major. I mean, the ramp is there. We'll have to put in that rough surface, you know. We'll have to do that. I've also asked for Alyssa to take, you know, because she's only two weeks in here, but she's also going to do like an aerial view of like this lance on parking to kind of see what we can do with those parking spots and what it would look like.
Okay. So do you, because the first part of your statement, that it would be minor defects, I was ready to make a motion. Do you want to, do you all want to wait until you see those aerial views? And will that be current? I mean, if, because if you go on Google Earth, which I did, and it did show, I have a parking over there. But if you get on an older version of Google Earth, it's going to be parallel and not be pertinent.
I think just the measurements and stuff like that, you're going to be able to see like the difference and, and things like that.
Okay. So should we table it again?
Yeah, I asked Aaron to be here tonight, just for this reason.
Okay.
Because I'm getting a conflicting story with Sheila from you to me. Sheila wants this to be a one-way alley. You're saying she wants parallel parking and.
Well, no, hold on. Let me clarify. She does not necessarily want parallel parking. She wants a parallel handicap space in front of her building. I don't know what, I don't think she necessarily wants parallel.
Still running into an issue on the west side of the alleyway, where people are still parked at a 45. It's not going to prevent you from having to pull halfway up the street if they don't see anything. Honestly, it's not. I'm really surprised we've got more wrecks than we have there, because even with, I try to avoid going down north, down this alleyway, because you really can't see. And people turn in, they're either turning or coming from a stoplight, and you start creeping out, you don't even know they're there. They turn, say, going south down, going south down, or north down 81, they've turned north, and they're right there on your fast. So I don't, no matter what the parking is to the east of it, it's still not going to fix our west problem.
Correct.
But west of Main Street's just as bad.
Yeah, the alleyway's just as bad.
If you try to turn off Main Street and go west on Oklahoma, boy, sometimes during the day, you have to get right in the middle of the street.
And we've had, we've had more wrecks there than we have here. The, and that's for a whole lot of reasons. There's people parking there too, so I mean.
I feel like that in this instance, the west side, coming off 81 either direction, poses more of a threat than looking to the east.
Yeah.
Because they're coming so much quicker. You may look and they may be gone, or you know, it may be clear, and by the time you get there, they're not, you know, you're, they're both going to be surprised.
I don't, I don't know the best solution to it. I, to my honest opinion, I think the alleyway fixes is making it a one-way street, because regardless, you're going to have that same problem. No matter how they park, because if you're in a little bit of car pulling out of here, like Tiffany Scamario would pull out here, you know, after a fellow parked at 45 degree park, you're not going to see around. You got to pull, you have to pull further out.
Well, and they're parking so close to the alley intersection.
If you just did away with two, two, three parking spaces next to the alley and next to Main Street, you know.
I think going away with one actually would help considerably.
But the problem with 81 is you're still not going to see the car that's turning.
So I, you know, my deal is, you know, on both sides of the street, neither one, me, neither one of them people want to see parallel parking, because, you know, we don't have.
I agree, and I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with Bert that we need to do something. So, you know, it's just, I want to do it right the first time instead of making several changes. So that's why I asked Aaron to be here tonight. We can table it, see what it's going to cost us to put handicap parking there. You know, it's just like over on that side, the handicap parking is there, but to tell you honestly, if you go look there, the very first slots, people are parking there, are not handicap, they don't got a sticker, you know. So, you know, that telephone pole that way, where that handicap should probably should be, parking right at the edge of the corner is not a parking spot. You know, we probably, we probably don't force that.
Well, it's not legally marked. I think, I don't think we can, because it's not actually.
Well, I'm sorry, we're, I agree, Harold, and I think what, it, it looks to me like it's past time to paint parking stripes. And I don't know.
That's high up on her list.
When we do that, I, I personally would like to figure out what kind of paint the state uses for the center lines and stuff, because our paint just never seems to stay long. But beside that point, maybe study, I know at one time, when Main Street had angle parking, they went from 45-degree parking to 30-degree parking. So it slanted the cars more and made a wider travel area. So maybe those are things you could look into and come back with a proposal, and then the, the striping be repainted. I know when I parallel park downtown, it's half the time the car in front of me or behind me is halfway over a line that's really hard to see. And so then I have to park not in a full space as well, so.
I mean, if it was longer, because I, I know you go that way, which I live on the west side, so when I turn, you got, worst thing you got to do, worry about somebody backing out.
Correct.
And see, like the four-door vehicles and stuff like that, and hell, I'm even bad about it. I don't pull all the way up to the curb, you know, it's my, you know, so, you know, I stick out in the road a little bit farther sometimes than I should, but, you know, but that's why I wanted to know about Aaron, I guess.
I would just say, like, I don't, when it comes to the parking thing, I have no, I have no opinion on that. You're still going to have the traffic hazard of pulling out here regardless of how you do it, so.
I mean, Aaron, the problem is, right here, we got so many restaurants.
People park on these sidewalks, because it's easier, because they have one parallel park.
Yeah. Harold, I got one, one comment. This is actually for Tiffany and Alyssa. There are state and federal requirements for handicap parking, and they are very demanding. If I was you guys, I would look at that, possibly get with Jared on it before you start creating handicap spots, because if you do it wrong, we'll have to double the work to straighten it out.
We've talked about that.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, since it's been on like three months, until the week.
Since you don't actually end up taking action and making a motion on it, it can keep coming back, so.
I got a question, Jared. What exactly, because we're getting into fall, the cooler temperatures, we're not mowing as much now, and so we're really working on trying to get, like, they're working, you know, in the next couple of weeks to do that, that overlay to show which angle of parking. Does that have to be approved by the board, or can we go in and do that? Because people are, we're really needing stripes and.
Yeah, I mean, where it sounds like the policy has always been, it was probably parallel. If you're officially going to switch it to angled, it's probably not a horrible idea to get it approved, especially because with the striping and all of that, you're going to have some kind of expenditure that you might need to get approved anyway. So you might as well knock it out all at once, call a special meeting if you need to, no way you need to. But probably better safe than sorry with that, I think.
So we want to make a motion to.
Do we need a motion to table?
No, if you don't move to table it and you don't take any other action on it, it can just get brought back. So I think you're fine to just leave it where it is, and we'll bring it back next month.
Approve ImageNet Consulting Master Service Agreement for the FY 2425, as well as the migration of Microsoft 365 license for employees and board members. Tiffany?
And this is to move everybody over from regular Microsoft to Microsoft 365, also with the creation of town emails. So we've identified, I think, 22 people within the town that would need, that would, that would get these. That includes the five board members, the clerk, the treasurer. So that's what this is.
Do we include reserve Microsoft or something? Are they included?
No.
What's the cost on that, Tiffany? Is it in here or not?
It's in there. Kind of expensive, but. Our monthly fee will be $556.80, and that's for them to, that's for them to maintain, maintain it all. They will also, people who have like Kelly and Shelley and myself, different people who have emails already set up with PLDI, that will include making those emails route to our new email addresses. And then I think the, to get it all up and going, it's the 8750.
So the 8750 was, is a one-time fee?
Correct.
And then everything else is just, okay. So this is probably prescription or subscription base to Microsoft 365?
Correct, yes.
So this isn't actually us paying necessarily, then this is our fee?
This includes the licenses.
Okay, the licensing for Microsoft, okay.
Yeah.
Does this also include the database that we talked about? I know I've seen that it says, oh, that says migration per terabyte.
That's to move stuff over, but each license will. Yes.
This includes the SharePoint site that we've been considering, okay.
Yes.
I thought so. I just want to verify.
That sounds like a good deal.
I think so. I make a motion to approve ImageNet, I guess I should ask, does anybody else have any questions? Sorry. I want to jump on you guys. Okay. I make a motion to approve ImageNet Consulting Master Service Agreement for fiscal year 2425, as well as migration and Microsoft 365 licenses for employees and board members.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to apply for the FY 25 RE grant to finalize electronic water meter system with purchase of the rest of MXUs and a remote antenna for remote RE system. Tiffany?
So we've been working with, to try to get numbers to, to do this. We've come up with a few things to apply for the grant that we've had some immediate needs. Alyssa went out and she, one of them was a, a water fill station. And Alyssa was able to obtain a grant, a RE grant to do that one. So then we were able to transition over to trying to finish up our meter RE system. All the meters are in, we have 560-some that don't have MXUs, which those don't allow us to do drive-by system. We're only able to like wand them. But this, if we go after, we could get the rest of those MXUs and then do a fixed radio base at, at our water tower that would allow us inside Town Hall to access people's RE and data from the desk, instead of sending out the employees to go do fill tests and things like that.
So that would eliminate monthly meter reading as far as walking or driving around?
Correct.
Wow.
And also, I bet you we do anywhere from five to 15 fill tests a week. So, and it takes the guys some time to, they have to come in here and get the equipment, and then they go out and they do the fill test. And so that would eliminate that too.
Wonderful.
Like, why, why sometimes like at my meter, they take that little black bill out and set it on top?
Well, sometimes we have to point out from where, that what's in the port into the MXU, but I mean, it stays connected to the lid.
And they, and they leave it there?
As far as I know, yours is still connected on the lid.
I put it back underneath the, underneath the meter, because I was afraid I'd run over my thing.
Every once in a while, they have to take the water to clean it, but.
I mean, I just want, so.
I got a question. Tiffany, I'm not complaining, but. Tiffany, I'm not complaining, but I had trouble opening some of the documents in my email. What's the... How much money are we talking here for the purchase of the rest of the MXUs and remote antenna?
We... Alyssa called and talked to Jeff a while ago, and he sent me a text just a minute ago.
Perfect time.
And we're looking at a rough estimate of about $176,000 to include the MXUs and the antenna.
Yeah, and of course, you're going to...
And the, all the software that we would need for it.
I got it. Okay, so the agenda item is for us to approve applying for the REIT grant?
Correct. We're going to have to have another meeting that would, after we get all of these numbers, we were hoping to get all these numbers. But if you guys don't think that it is a good route for us to take, then we would take... We would need to go some, you know, a different route before we finish up the documentation. But once we get, you guys say, "Yes, that sounds like a good plan," we can write the grant, get the resolution, have all of the financial stuff for it, and bring it back to you guys to approve the resolution. We are going to have to have a special meeting to approve a resolution that the town would pledge so much money towards that.
It looks like it would save a ton of employee hours, am I wrong?
Oh, yeah. It would save a lot of time.
I mean, they read meters. Now, it used to take like seven days. Now they can get it done in less than two days. But that's three people in two days, so that's six, you know, six man days. And then the field test, I mean, that's probably, I would say, at least there every month, too.
And will the system pretty much be automatic to download into your equipment here in Town Hall, or...
Yes.
Is it going to take a staff member to go in and look at each meter and basically read it?
No, it will download into our...
Into, so you're just going to get a whole...
Because right now, we're able to come in, plug the handhelds in, it goes into the system, and then decipher's it over into our system. So we won't have to have those handhelds anymore. It'll just come down into that, into that program that we currently have.
And they still work like a distance, like in our heights, like city curves? Wow, that's awesome.
So basically, it's your own personal little SCADA system?
Correct, yes.
So, within that term?
Can you disconnect and...
No, not yet.
Not remotely?
They're just about, they're just about to that point, but they are...
Oh, I bet.
Going to be expensive. What, we would have to change out the, I think they said, the meters?
Yeah.
Would have to be different? Yeah.
Well, we don't have the money OGN East got, so... Well, I make a motion that we apply for the fiscal year 25 REIT grant to finalize the electronic water meter system with purchase of the rest of the MXUs and remote antenna for remote REIT system.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Approve Resolution Number 2024-03, supporting appointment of Tiffany Tillman to the Oklahoma Municipal League Regional Council. Tiffany?
OML is coming out. They have their board of directors. They're also coming out with where people can join a regional council. So they're going to... This is going to be a group of people that can come and kind of do some legwork for the board members, come up with different ideas for things and just help out. And so they've been reaching out, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for HNSC to be heard, too.
Great opportunity for what?
HNSC to be heard, like anything, any ideas, any, you know, things like that.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-03, supporting the appointment of Tiffany Tillman to the Oklahoma Municipal League Regional Council.
Second.
Okay, Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. Approve job description for chief of police. Tiffany?
This is the... I haven't had any kind of comments back on the job description, so I do want to change one thing. I didn't get it changed before I sent it out. Aaron had reviewed it. There is a requirement in there to meet the police pension requirement. A police chief is not required to be on the pension, so we don't have to hire them under the age, you know, the age requirements and things like that. So I'd like to take that portion out, but other than that...
Did you say you and Aaron worked this thing together?
Mm-hmm.
And that was the only thing I really saw of your problem, because chiefs of police aren't required to be on that, and you made a limit. I think we made one hire based on that.
Yeah.
If you do that.
You guys ready?
Yep.
Harold, ready?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the job description for chief of police with one change pending.
Change for pension system requirement.
Change to the pension system requirement. Let me say it again.
Second.
Okay, who seconded?
I did.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Approve FY 2024 Accounting Service Agreement with Crawford and Associates. Tiffany?
When we started working on the 24 audit, and then we've been having questions this year, we come to find out that we did not get this approved. It got lost in an email somewhere in email land, and so we need to get this approved. I don't think that, I mean, I personally would not want to go to somebody else, but that's up to you guys.
Make a motion to approve FY 2025 Accounting Service Agreement with Crawford and Associates.
Second.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Approve Computer Information Concepts Annual Peopleware Agreement for Financial Accounting Software. Tiffany?
This is our annual agreement for the financial software system.
Make a motion to approve the Computer Information Concepts Annual Peopleware Agreement for Financial Accounting Software.
Second.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Give me a second.
Welcome back to the body to the Town HNSC Utility Authority Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Tuesday of October 8, 2024. Call with order. Hold call.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. The minutes of the previous month's meeting. HNSC Utilities Authority Board of Trustees. Approval of claims as follows. HNSC Utilities Authority Fund, $75,544.19. Previous month HNSC Utilities Authority Fund, $213.62. Except the department reports, the Water Department... Approve Computer Information Concepts Annual Peopleware Agreement for Financial Accounting Software. Approve ImageNet Consulting Masters Agreement for FY 24-25 as well as migration in Microsoft 365 licenses for employees and board members. Approve the renewal of liability and property insurance with Oklahoma Monthly Insurance Group. Approve FY 24-25 Accounting Service Agreement with Crawford and Associates. Approve a final pay at number three for Grade Works Construction for REIT 24 Waterline Project. Accept REIT 24 Waterline Project as completed by Grade Works Construction. Apply for the FY 25 REIT Grant to finalize the electronic water meter system with purchase of the rest of the MXUs and remote antenna for remote REIT systems.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
I'm staying.
Harold?
Yes. Says and comments. Other scheduled business? New business?
Oops.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fast on that second. Said he's fast on that.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.